Christmas.
Okay, we're ready to go. Go ahead.
We're ready. Okay, like I said, during the past eight years, the rates hasn't changed. Due to the increase with landfill disposal costs, fuel, everything, I've thought at times, it's increased the rates a little bit, but not increased them to the point where it's going to drive away our customers and people from the city from using our facility. So basically what I did was I did a comparison at both landfills that are local to us, Valley and Scottsdale, and found out at Valley, for example, they charge you $122 a ton. Scottsdale charges roughly $110 a ton. Now, what's different with a landfill is you can only dispose of a ton at the landfill, but they don't break it down per pound or anything else. So what I did-
So that's their minimum?
Yeah.
If you take anything less than 2,000 pounds of business.
Exactly. You're going to pay a ton. So what I did was, how it's always been done before is we broke it up. Where the first 200 pounds were always $12. Well, I changed it to $12.50. It's a 50 cent increase just during that first 200 pounds. Then after that, how we work up there is every 20 pounds, we charge you. At the current rate, it's 95 cents every 20-pound increments. I'm raising it up to $1.05, $1.05 per 20 pounds. Make a long story short, over the length of making it up to 2,000 pounds, we're raising it only $10. And so the new rate will be $107 dollars per ton versus the $97. Or if you want to get technical, we charge .048 pounds, or .048 cents per pound. Right now, it's going to be at 0.535 cents per pound. So I think it's just something good to do, just rebound from some of the cost offsets.
Good.
This is going to be on the agenda next week, or on the eighth, I guess, as a motion for me to prepare and advertise the ordinance. This is an ordinance that we would have to have advertised, that we didn't have enough time to prepare and advertise a notice for passage on the eighth.
On the eighth, so we'll have to pass it on-
February.
February eighth?
Yeah.
Hey Jim, you want to talk? You can have Julie's.
I haven't been sworn in yet.
No, I'm not. I'm just giving you Julie's packet.
Oh.
So you can follow along. I wasn't giving you her seat.
No, no.
I was going to give you her packet with the agenda and stuff.
I caught you.
And the same sentiment that I just stated is going to be for item six as well. That's an ordinance. That one will be a little different. The pay increase will be retroactive to the beginning of the year, until the passing of February.
Okay. So we can't do that with this, huh? We have to pass it and then implement the way-
Because there's the 10-day notice requirement. I talked to Wayne this morning, and I said I could probably talk to them and shoehorn it in in time. But he said he'd prefer just to do them in February in case there's questions.
Matt, Mayor, Council, item two, three, four, and five were all reappointments. That would be a reappointment of Deputy Mayor, reappointment of City Secretary, reappointment of City Solicitor, reappointment of Engineering Fund. I do see that there is Gibson Thomas Engineering Fund, a rain shed within here. So you can look at that because of the items two, three, five, that would be added to the budget. Then, of course, Zach had already spoken on item six.
Do you have any questions or any discussion?
Do you have any question I have that you guys probably can't answer? Are these rates for Gibson Thomas the same as last year, or are they increased or anything?
I didn't know that.
I got one. Check it.
Item number seven is date for DCEV to discuss provisions of later of City Home Loan Choice of Dates or Even Union January 24th, 29th, 38th, and IC 22nd.
Yeah, I talked to Wayne about that. He said it was going to, if it would be on the 22nd, it would probably be immediately before or after the agenda session meeting.
And I, did you guys know what that's about?
We had talked about it briefly to the follow-up suggestion. I had talked to Wayne one time ago about, do we need some kind of orientation plan for new people at council? And I think sort of that's how that kind of came out of that. That we all might benefit from just a guy sort of go through the whole new charter with us.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah. Yeah, that kind of follows in with number 10, what I wanted to talk to you guys about when we get to the Africa.
Number eight is set the results of finding a bid for new truck at police car. Is that your, is that your truck, mine?
Yeah, yeah, that would be-
Those capital projects?
Yes, those are capital. And I don't think, we talked the last time about, the truck that I put in for, it would be our last street department truck with upper fleet over salt plow trucks to where we need to be with newer equipment, smaller equipment. And we're also getting the same thing as we did last year, a 2017 Ford F-50 chassis. So it'd be equipped with plow, spreader, dump. So, you know, with that, I think Wayne is still working on, I think the last time, a couple other bids or I'm not sure.
The vehicles are CoStar's vehicles, but the financing, we're bidding out on both vehicles. Once we obtain the finance, you know, once we select the financing institution and the terms that they provided, we'll go through the local government, the debt act requirements for carrying on due debt to the extent that we have to.
That wasn't the later rule related to the classified section?
Yeah, I don't know what that, I posted that for, but I remember doing it at the end of last week.
And the police vehicle will be replacing the USUV with another SUV. So that most of the equipment will-
Yeah, pretty much 95% of the equipment is just going to transfer right over to the new police vehicle. So it's going to just save a lot of money from upfitting to new cage and everything else.
Have we ever done a study of, since you've been switching out these vehicles like we have, compared to what we used to spend, we need to, you know, keep the vehicles longer?
Yeah.
Are we saving decent amount of money by doing it? And I imagine we are.
Yeah, because if you look at repair cost per year, if you go back just while I've been here, the past couple of years, on my repair item line, on highways or sanitation, just for example, every year, we max that out on repairs. So say, you know, highways is budgeted $12,000 for repairs and sanitation at 11. We're using all that, if not more, to repair than if we were to go ahead and get rid of these old vehicles, get new. We're not spending that money. You know, we are upfront for the payment, the cost of that, but the problem is, in the long term, you know, we're not having 20-year vehicles. So if we can somehow, I guess, find a good period of maybe between seven and 10 years to trade in the vehicles, then get new ones, we're going to save a lot of money in the long run because we're not going to have to put the repair back.
You're going to find that sweet spot.
Yeah.
Just like selling your car.
Exactly. Now, roll-up trucks, it's a little different. You can keep those a little longer. They're built a lot better. But our salt plow trucks with the, with the Ford, the F-50s that we're using, you know, I think seven to 10 years is the max you want to keep one of those. You know, for one thing, they have a good warranty to begin with, so you're pretty much covered from about five years. So after that, you know, it might be small repairs, but a lot of the stuff with the Ford, the F-50 chassis, we can do in-house. You know, we can repair those at a lot cheaper cost.
You get a warranty with your vehicle?
Yes.
One thing I wanted to talk also about is when we switch these cars, for say, a car is a bonus if we can change out the equipment. Because a lot of times, the manufacturers of these police vehicles or police vehicles, they'll change styles of like the backseat or the side windows where you can't use the same barge from last year's model. So you have to go upgrade all your equipment, so that's an extra cost. But when we can switch out the equipment to, from vehicle to vehicle, we save a ton of money. Also, with what Mike was saying, we wanted to get on like a rotating schedule where when a car is approaching this warranty expiration and mileage for the year, we're ready to trade it in. So anything major, like a transmission or something like that, powertrain will all be covered under warranty. So we're not going to take that big loss, which would not, now if we try to extend the life of it, then we're on our own. I can't lose money because we can trade it in at a higher value, plus have a new warranty and not have it extended. We're trying to, I'm sure Mike's doing the same, we're trying to get on some kind of renovation to do where they fall into line if you want to do anything. So the fact that we can switch over the light bars and the cages and things like that are a big plus.
Thank you.
Accept them to renovation. They were two of the stacks on the planning quarters in the market. That's beyond the agenda. Advertising, public meeting with council, revitalization, and various foundations during the month of February.
Well, I was, first of all, before we even decided what we're going to advertise it, I wanted to talk about it with everybody and see if you were interested. I talked about this before, but then I thought with the, you know, with the potential council changing, it would make more sense to wait until the new year. But one of the things I thought about is kind of like, almost like a, to Eric's point, an orientation is picking a, it would have, I think it would have to be a Saturday because we're probably going to need like four hours. A Saturday morning, 9 to 1 or something like that, here, we can, I don't care if it's open to the public or not, I mean, we could do it either way, but I don't care if it's open to the public. And invite the foundations, representatives from the foundations that support the city, revitalization, parking rec. I even thought maybe inviting April Kopech from the Land Bank, and giving them each maybe 15 or 20 minutes to kind of do a little bit of a presentation about what they're about, what their goals and objectives are, and then have just some open discussions so that we can all learn about each other and what they're, you know, because I know there's a lot of questions. I know there's a lot of Land Bank questions. I know there's a lot of questions at times with the foundations, with revitalization and with parking rec. So I thought maybe if we all sat down at the beginning of the year and had this, you know, little orientation with all the groups together, it might be beneficial to all of us. So I wanted to know if you guys were interested in doing that, because if I don't have a commitment from, you know, the council, then I don't want to really waste other people's time if I don't get the whole council to participate. Are you interested or not?
Yep.
I'm absolutely interested.
All right. What I'll do is I'll send out, I'll send you guys out an email tomorrow and, I mean, obviously, we know what the Saturdays are in February, and try to get a consensus of a day, and then I'll, or maybe the easiest thing to do would be to ask you to look at the Saturdays in February and see if there's, if there isn't one that will not work for you and let me know. And then I can go to these, you know how this is going to be, like herding cats, trying to get all these people together to, at the same time. But I think it would be, I also think it would be beneficial for, you know, those entities to hear from us as well as from each other. So I just think it might be a good, good thing to do.
I'll just need at least, we'll need time-
Yeah.
-to advertise.
Advertise.
Yeah, it'll have to be a special meeting essentially. It'll have to be in the newspaper at least 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we'll have, you'll have plenty of time. I mean, I'm going to try to get it scheduled first part of January, so everybody can block off their calendars and, you know, 9 to 1 seem okay with you guys? If we're done early, we're done early.
I'm busy till about 10:30 on Saturday.
Every Saturday.
I am too, but I can get out at 10.
Well, maybe we'll do it 10 to 2 then, up here.
We're doing 11, I think. At that time, you have to be 11. Or even you can be here at 10:30.
Oh, yeah.
All right. We'll try 10:30 then. We'll just maybe have, we'll bring lunch in.
12.
Yeah, something like that. Okay. See what we can do.
When do you want to give a date for the other one, Russ?
Oh, I don't have, I don't care.
Oh, I'm curious.
How long?
Number seven.
The 22nd, definitely when I've given up a second night.
Right, right.
We did 5:30.
Well, I guess the question I have is, what are we looking for from this DCEV person?
So this came into conversation because I took a class from them, and they were very informational.
Did you take one of those? Yeah, I took them. I took the two when I became mayor.
It was about the financial aspect of things, just to learn a couple of things. And they had mentioned that they did something. And then I came and talked to Wayne. He, you know, gave him the information that I received from them. And he said that he knows this guy from experience and that he would be willing to come and help us out because, you know, some, well, I guess I'm the only one that hasn't been on council before, so I'm sort of learning as I go. And this guy is extremely knowledgeable, extremely knowledgeable.
Yeah, I know who, I know the guy, I know the guy too. And yeah, those local government academy things are really good, I thought.
Yeah, it was really, it was a good thing. So anyways, so, you know, I'm interested in it. I felt-
I guess my question is, is an hour enough?
I think what, he could fit it into whatever we wanted, is what I was under the understanding.
Yeah, because that's what I'm wondering. I mean, are we, are we going to give him a topic or are we, I mean, I don't-
I think he's going over the charter, right?
That's sort of what this says, to discuss provisions of the Latrobe City Home Loan Charter. So maybe he already has like sort of a pre-canned-
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine with the 22nd if an hour is enough time. I mean, I could get here at 5, but I don't know about the rest of that.
I can get here at 5.
You can get here at 5, probably?
I don't know.
Let's find out, let's tentatively plan for the 22nd at like 5. And then we'll ask Wayne if an hour and a half is enough. If an hour is enough, we'll just push back to 5:30. Okay? Anything else? Anyone else guess?
Anybody hear anything about the deck hockey program?
Uh, no.
I heard it described up there and stuff.
Well, I will tell you this, one thing I do know is the number, the deck hockey numbers were going down even before the deck hockey, even when the deck hockey was at Lincoln Road. They were declining, just based on population. And the high school is, has, I guess, another, a junior high program, two, that they just started recently, the hockey, junior high hockey program, or they're starting a junior high hockey program. So when we looked at the financial numbers and the declining participation in deck hockey over the past two years, and tried to project out to see if we could see that there would be any kind of an increase, we didn't see it. So it looked like we were going to be spending all that money for a decline in population, and then what? And, and they're just more and more interested in that hockey. So I have not heard anything. I had a parking rec meeting last Thursday. No one said anything about it, so I don't know. What do you hear?
I heard there's people are going to Bell Burn and then somewhere else instead of up there.
Well, I know that-
Or quitting her.
Well, I know that for the winter, the numbers were pretty much what they normally are for winter. Winter's usually their, their lowest number, you know? And I don't know if it's because there is ice hockey going on or what, but the indicator I always thought was like in the summer, that's, that was usually their first population. But I haven't heard. The last I asked about it, they said up there, their numbers were pretty much what they had been for this time of year in the past. So maybe that's changed though.
Well, I told them, like I tell everybody, if you have a problem, come to the meeting, go to the meeting.
Well, yeah, I mean, the parking rec meetings are open to the public too. No one ever comes to them, so.
Now, they, can I jump around to back to this big meeting that you want to have with, you want to help with everybody? Is that a time you had said about in the new year where you sort of redefine the goals for the city? Is that something that is done in the year?
Well, I mean, one of the things I wanted to, you know, I was going to talk about is I wanted your input as to what committees we should have in the upcoming year. Because I don't feel like, I don't know, we're getting much committee work done. Maybe it's because we don't know what we're supposed to be doing in the committee, so I don't know.
Well, the entertainment committee or whatever.
The events committee seems to be-
The events committee, you know.
You guys, I mean, you guys-
Alan, Alan and the chamber have done it all.
Yeah, but at least there was stuff going on. I mean, like-
Well, yeah.
I mean, I, and I don't know, I still think we need a parking study done. But I don't know if that's something that a parking committee needs to do, or if we need to get someone in from the outside to do it. I think, I think we need to look at our rates, how we structure parking. I just, you know, I don't know. That's my thought. I don't know what you guys think. I'm open for suggestions, whatever, you know, what do you, what do you guys want to see? You don't have to answer me now, think about it, because we're going to reorganize in a couple of weeks. And I still, I still like the idea of having committees. The difference with a small council, like in the old days when they had the big council, you could have, you know, three or four people on a committee and didn't have to worry about, you know, sunshine law stuff. Now you can only have three at most. And then, then the mayor can't participate because then it becomes a quorum. So sometimes you can just have two. So I mean, obviously, the finance committee and the personnel committee need to be, and sometimes, you know, the finance committee is mostly only active during the budget time, and personnel committee is only active when we have personnel-related issues. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of those all the time. Sometimes it comes and goes. But, you know, I think there needs to be, you know, a public safety committee, but I think that some goals and objectives for those committees need to be determined, and I think that's up to us to determine what we want them to be. So.
Has any municipality ever done a study to see how they could eliminate paid parking?
I had asked Wayne last year to do like just a short analysis of parking revenue, what would happen, you know, based on, you know, if we did, if we eliminated the parking and had free parking, what's the revenue loss when we figure out the cost, you know, the cost of having parking?
And if we make it up.
Huh? Well, yeah, that's a big question. But, you know, yeah, I mean, the issue is, you know how much, you know what your cost is for your leader pendant, cost and benefits there. So that's, you know, that, that cost goes away. Well, we don't look at as the other surrounding costs around it, tickets and all of that. But the bottom line is, even in a very short study, there's, it's definitely going to be detrimental to us financially to do, to do away with parking, because we've got a big bond issue for the parking garage. I also think, so, you know, I don't know. I think there was a parking study done a couple of years ago when Alex was here, but I don't know where the results of that.
That was back before we, when we ran into first issues with parking garage. We did that.
That was a little sham.
Was it?
Never even talked to me about parking.
Right, yeah. They didn't talk to Jim.
Well, that was still when Rick was here.
They just did their little shit-ass study.
I'm a full Florida man. I haven't talked to anybody in town.
Well, I don't know where the results of that thing are, but I, that wasn't the same one we had where we had that. That was a different one, I think.
Well, that was about 12 grand.
Yeah. Well, we're going to go, we're going to look for that one. Look for the results of that. I'm sure there was a report.
That's right. You're right.
So anyways, I just think, something needs to be done there. There was something else I was thinking about too. Oh, and then, you know, I also think we need to be thinking about, you know, January 15th, the Casella Square Latrobe opens, and we're losing, it's going to be a big sucking sound out of downtown. So not only are we losing those doctors, not all of them are losing, but a significant number of them are, we're going to lose that EIT tax too. So, from those people that are no longer working in the city. So we're going to need to figure out, well, number one, what's, you know, what's the, really what is the revenue loss there? And then what? And how, what are we going to do to, you know, fill up those buildings and regenerate interest? I will tell you that, can't remember the date now, it was December 14th, we had the ribbon cutting for the incubator. I think you guys were all invited, but I know we're in the morning, so I know that's hard for some people to get to. But it was really, really, we had like 50-some people there. Patrak was there, Ted Kopech, and a lot of Bill Thompson from Workforce Development. And there was just a really good turnout and a lot of excitement and enthusiasm around it. They have one, they have one occupant already, and I think they're readying two offices for two other occupants, but I don't know what they are. With the goal of, you know, giving them six to nine months in the incubator at low, low to no rent, depending on the issue, and then, you know, relocating them into downtown, once they've had a chance to establish their business. So it was really kind of a pretty cool thing to be a part of and to have in downtown. I think the last, I think we had an incubator one time over at the old WCCC building, didn't we? Do you remember, Jim? You're probably the only one that's been around here long enough to remember that building. You, Jim Kelly, would remember. Over in the old metal building, yeah. And that's got to be four years ago, maybe?
Easily, easily.
So was it successful?
I don't remember. I really don't. I don't remember. I wasn't that engaged in it then, but some municipalities have thought it to be successful. So I guess it just depends. We'll just have to see what happens.
What's one of those aberrant theater? Was there a fire there?
I don't know that one was ever there.
We can just try and have a-
No, they had, they had a fire.
I don't know.
It was a break for all the sprinklers?
They're trying to get their sprinkler system in place. And that's really the last stumbling block that they had, is getting a sprinkler system in. So I know that's what they're trying to do.
Okay, I just got an email from Paris Al.
Oh, did you? Like just now?
Like, a couple of days ago.
Oh, okay. From like-
All right. So he says, we've, they've had our architectural drawings approved. I understand that the next step is for the city to assess a fee and once paid, moving issue with building permit. I haven't had a chance to read the question probably forward this on to maybe you or Wayne.
Yeah, I'd send it to Wayne and Ann.
They say that all the time.
Yeah, I've been hearing, I think I've been hearing that for a long time. But, yeah, I'd send it, I'd send it to Ann and Wayne.
Oh, yeah.
They said they need the permit order complete, one application.
Hello?
Yeah, we've been doing-
Still regarding offspring, still regarding.
Yeah. Yeah.
So when we decide on anything, we'll talk.
Take a ride on the police car.
Huh?
Lots of rides, lots of rides.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not open to suggestions, I mean, whatever you guys think, you know, we should be looking at as far as committees are concerned.
Off the subject, Russ, Jim, do you think Officer Dirk brought the dog one night? I know he did that when Rocky first came aboard.
Sure.
I remember he hit something somewhere, and the dog-
Oh, that was fun, yeah.
His dog was getting into the rock.
I thought so, when I saw the pictures.
Yeah.
I was like, wow, that's kind of amazing. All right. Nothing else?
No.
We'll see you on the 8th.
See you next week.